I'd like to call this Village Board meeting of August 17th, 2017, to order. Would the clerk please take the roll?
President Jackson?
Here.
Trustee Schmidt?
Here.
Trustee Sullivan?
Excused.
Trustee Light?
Here.
Trustee Meritato?
Here.
Trustee Bojack?
Here.
And Trustee Schroder?
Here.
Would you all please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Your turn again, Trustee Schmidt.
Thank you, Mayor, again.
You're welcome.
If you just finished cleaning out the basement, attic, and garage, and you're looking for a place to sell your stuff, then join us for the 13th Annual Community Garage Sale on Saturday, September 9th, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at Camera Park. If you have nothing to sell, then come out and shop for bargains from our many sellers. For registration information, contact the Sports Hub at (630) 260-6060. The Village of Glendale Heights remembers Patriot Day on Monday, September 11th, with a silent parade of first responder vehicles, followed by a candlelight service at 7:15 p.m. on the front steps of the Village Hall. Please join Mayor Jackson, our Village Board of Trustees, police and fire personnel, neighbors, and friends, as our community comes together for a moment of silence and reflection on Patriot Day. And we remember those we lost on September 11th. For more information, please call the Mayor's Office at (630) 909-5303. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Trustee Light?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
The next coffee at the Mayor and Village Board is scheduled for Saturday, September 2nd, from 10:00 a.m. to noon, at the Center for Senior Citizens. If you have any comments, suggestions, or questions for the Mayor or Village Board, please call the Mayor's Office anytime at (630) 909-5303. The Village of Glendale Heights is gearing up to present the 35th Annual Show and Shine Car Show and Swap Meet at Camera Park on Sunday, September 17th, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:30 p.m. There will be 19 classes of vehicles on display, along with the Swap Meet, food, music, and touch truck exhibit for families and kids. If you're interested in registering a vehicle, or signing up to be in the Swap Meet, vendor or crafter, please visit www.glandalehighes.org/carshow to download a registration form.
Thank you, Mike. Trustee Meritato?
Oh, thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Showcase your surfing skills at the annual floor rider competition this Saturday, August 19th, at the GH2O Aquatic Center. Register by 1:30, as the competition starts promptly at 2:00. Pre-registration is encouraged at the Sports Hub. Surfers will have a chance to win gift packs, gift card, and more. Judges will be scoring in two different divisions, stand-up and flowboard. For more information, please contact the Sports Hub at (30) 260-6060. The GH2O Aquatic Center, last day of the season, is Monday, September 4th. Season pool hours will begin August 21st. The pool will only be open on Saturdays and Sundays, from noon to 7:00 p.m. Come on out and take a dip in the pool, hand ten on the floor rider surfing simulator, and enjoy the sliding water slides and diving complex. For more information, please contact the GH2O, and the postseason hours, contact the Sports Hub at (630) 260-6060. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Trustee Bojack?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Come out to Camera Park, September 14th through the 24th, for Oktoberfest, sponsored by Schnitzel Platts and the Village of Glendale Heights. Enjoy authentic German food and drink, live bands, dancing, entertainers, and other family-friendly activities. Enter for a chance to win a trip to Germany, which will include a special brewery tour. For more information, including hours, entertainment schedule, and admission fees, visit www.glandalehighsoctoberfest.com, or call (323) 577-3893. The Glendale Heights Police Department will host their 20th Citizens Police Academy, beginning Tuesday, September 5th. Enrollment is free and open to citizens 18 years of age or older, and older, who live or work in Glendale Heights. Applications for enrollment can be downloaded and printed from the Village website. For more information, contact the Police Department's non-emergency number at (630) 260-6070. Thank you.
Thank you, Chester. Trustee Schroder?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Come on out to Heritage Park for some fishing fun on Saturday, September 30th, from 9:30 a.m. until noon, at the annual fishing derby in conjunction with Harvest Fest, hosted by the Village of Glendale Heights, the FOP Lodge 52, and the Glen Side Fire Protection District. Try your luck at catching some of the tropical fish like catfish, bluegill, and bass that live in Lake Passera. Registration begins at 9:30 a.m., and the Derby will begin promptly at 10:00 a.m. At 1:45, at 11:45, I'm sorry, we will have a trophy presentation with prizes. The fishing derby is a catch-and-release event. So for more information, please contact the Sports Hub at (630) 260-6060. Also, celebrate the fall season at Heritage Park on Saturday, September 30th, from noon to 4:00 p.m. at the 3rd Annual Harvest Fest. Welcome autumn arrival with music, crafts, hayride, chili cook-off, back tournaments, food and drinks, games, and much more. This fall event is fun for the entire family, with activities for everyone. For more information, please contact the Sports Hub at (630) 260-6060. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mary. Um, if you have number two on your agenda, we are removing that until the first meeting in September. The charity golf classic presentation. And before we begin on the consent agenda, we need to remove item number six. And while you're on your consent agenda, that also changes your resolution number from number six. Number seven will now become number 72, and number eight will become number 73. That's all the changes I have. So we move into public discussion of agenda items. If there's anyone in the public that wishes to address this board on an agenda item, please Being nun, you have the consent agenda before you. What is your pleasure? Trustee Bojack?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Bojack?
Yes.
And Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
The consent agenda is approved. There is no old business, new business. Number one is a motion to waive first reading on new business items, number two and number four. Trustee Schmidt?
Move that we waive first reading on new business items, number two and number four.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? First reading is waived on items two and four. Item number two is an ordinance to approve and deny signed variances for Dunkin' Donuts at 2130 Bloomingdale Road in the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. This is from the August 3 Committee of the Whole Meeting. First reading has been waived, so this would be ordinance number 2017-46. Trustee Meritato?
Still moved.
Second.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Bojack?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
And Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Ordinance 2017-46 is approved. Number three is an ordinance authorizing the execution of an agreement with Trotter and Associates Incorporated for the Water Pollution Control Facility Phase One RIT Rehabilitation Project for the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. And that is first reading. Number four is an ordinance authorizing the execution of an agreement with Burke LLC for the Fullerton Avenue Culver Relining Project for the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. And first reading was waived, so this would be ordinance number 2017-47. Trustee Light?
Still moved.
Second.
Um, any discussion?
Yeah.
Chester?
Couple of quick questions. When will this start, and how long will it take?
Which project, Chester?
Your ordinance, for Fullerton Avenue Culver.
There's going to be some design work, probably about four or five weeks of design work, so probably something mid-September, October.
Oh, okay. How long will it take to complete it?
Probably before the end of November, beginning of December.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Bojack?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
And Trustee Light?
Yes.
Ordinance 2017-47 is approved. And there is no executive session. We are back to public discussion of agenda items. If there's anyone in the public that wishes to address this board on an agenda item, please step forward. Being nun, a motion to adjourn would be in order. Trustee Schmidt?
To adjourn?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The board meeting is adjourned, and Committee of the Whole is... Trustee Light?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
I'd like to welcome everybody to the Committee of the Whole meeting for August 17th, 2017. Clerk, could we please take note who's here?
So noted.
Thank you. Do we have any additions? I have one. Chester? What is it?
Kalia.
Okay. All right. Um, do we have any comments from the public? Anybody wish to address this board? Nobody's jumping up, okay. That'd be all right, then. Okay, we'll go on to our zoning administrator report here. A recommendation to approve commercial sign variance located at 234 and 236 East Army Trail Road Shell Gas Station. And I'm guessing?
Yes.
Okay, good guess.
Sorry you had to guess. The applicant is requesting variances to the sign regulations for the Shell Gas Station. When the conditional use was approved, variances were granted to allow greater square footage of signage. The ordinance requires that the signage is 1.5 square feet of sign area for every linear foot of building frontage. The Shell station has a disadvantage because their frontage is technically Bloomingdale Road. And so they did get a variance to allow that signage to increase. However, the applicant is requesting additional signage and to use the Army Trail Road side as the frontage, which is more reasonable. It's really the, for all intents and purposes, when you drive by Army Trail Road is what is considered the front, or what looks, appears to be the frontage. So they are requesting to change the signage from one wall sign to three wall signs, which they already have Olivia's Market sign there. They want to include a $5 car wash sign and a Paradise Cafe sign on the wall. The signage, the square footage, would go up from the 1.5 to, I believe it is, the two square feet of sign. So that's the second variance they're requesting, is the... The first is three signs. The second is to increase the square footage from 1.5 to two. That is comparable to variances that have been granted by the Village Board, Starbucks, Panda Express. So that is on the higher-speed road of Army Trail that is consistent with what's been previously approved. And the final sign variance is, to the height of the sign, our code allows a maximum signage height of 16 feet, and they are requesting 19 feet. What we're beginning to see is a lot of the buildings are being constructed higher with parapets or towers. The Village Board did grant a variance to, again, Starbucks and Panda Express, and I believe Burrito Perea, to have that little bit of high, the sign a little bit higher so it stands up and is more appropriate placed aesthetically on the higher wall. So I did recommend approval of those variances due to the higher speed on Army Trail Road and the unique circumstances of the facility.
Do we have any questions?
Pat? It's Pat.
Yeah, yeah, remember.
Pat?
Julian, the height of the sign?
Yes.
Is it going to be, like, with the rest of the signs in the area? Or is this going to be higher than, like, the furniture store?
No, it's... I'm sorry, apologize. It is not going to be higher. It's going to be a couple feet down from the top of the building. So it's not going to extend beyond the building. So it is going to be in line. It's going to be lower than the furniture store building.
Dunkin' Donuts going to be the same size?
Yes.
Same height?
Yes.
Okay, so everything in that one area, all the signs are going to be all the same height?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions?
No, you need a motion.
Mayor?
Um, I'd like to move it to the board with a recommendation to concur.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we'll move that to the board. Right, next one. Plan Commission. A recommendation to deny an application for a conventional use permit for an establishment serving alcoholic beverages called Paradise Deli and Cafe, to be located at 234 and 236 East Army Trail Road in the Shell Gas Station. How about Joanne?
Okay. The applicant, again, the Shell Gas Station, they have requested a conditional use permit for an establishment serving alcohol, to be able to serve alcohol in a cafe, which is part of the convenience store gas station building. The Plan Commission considered the request and did vote to recommend denial of the proposed conditional use. The Plan Commission was concerned that the original conditional use for the gas station and car wash had adequate parking, but the parking was anticipated to serve faster traffic movements of people getting gas or going to the convenience store and leaving more quickly. Two of the parking spaces actually have the vacuum stalls associated with the car wash in it, so those can double, but typically for someone going in and getting chips or whatever, so they would be a higher volume. So the Plan Commission was concerned with an establishment serving alcohol, that people would be staying for a longer period of time, and taking up spaces that would normally be used for the faster. Additionally, they're concerned about the congestion on site. It is a relatively tight site, and with the additional traffic of alcohol establishment, that there would be greater amount of traffic, and that it would lead to congestion. So they did recommend denial.
Okay, do we have any questions? Bill?
Thank you.
Slow tonight.
Joanne, when you say "an alcohol establishment," you are referring to a facility that would permit consumption of alcohol on the premises, correct?
That's correct. The establishment already has a liquor license to sell packaged liquor, so this would be a different license to serve, pour on-site, and consume on-site. I should mention, I apologize, the applicant is here as well this evening.
Well, I'm not a big fan of mixing gasoline and alcohol. Sorry.
Any other questions? Pat?
Julian, by alcohol, what do you mean? Beer and wine, or?
Yes, they are requesting beer and wine. They are not requesting... That would be part of the liquor license requirement. The plan, the zoning only establishes alcohol in general, it would be the liquor license consideration, but the applicant has advised that it would be beer and wine.
Okay, so what does this mean? Does this mean that we open it up to all the rest of the gas stations?
There is a concern about precedent setting. That is always an issue of, if the Village Board were to approve a gas station at this location, someone similarly located could make that same request.
Well, I agree with Bill. I'm not too... I'm not crazy about it.
Do we have any more? Chester?
This is strictly serving. They can sell the packaged goods.
Correct, they already have that license, yes.
Right, I just wanted to clarify that.
I have to agree also, if they're going to consume it on the property, I mean, you're drinking and driving at the same time, and this is what we're trying to eliminate, isn't I just made a comment. No need for an answer.
Chester?
Chief, this is for you. If they're selling packaged, do they have to have... What's that term that...
Basset.
Basset. Do they have to be basset-drained? All of, everyone?
To...
Manager.
To package.
Strictly the manager, or?
Everyone.
No other questions? How about a motion?
You want a motion?
Mayor?
Um, I'd like to send a motion to the board with the recommendation to deny the application for a conditional use permit for an establishment serving alcoholic beverages called Paradise Deli and Cafe, to be located at 234-236 East Army Trail Road in the Shell Gas Station.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we'll move it to the board with a recommendation to deny. All right, next presentation by Tesco Associates Homes for a Changing Region Report Summary.
Want me to give a brief intro? Michael Blue from Tesco is here in regard to the grant that the Village... The Village obtained a grant for a housing study, and Tesco was selected as the consultant to take out, move forward with that study through CMAP. And Michael Blue is here this evening to give a brief summary.
Great, thank you. Podium's yours.
A brief summary. Mayor, Trustees, thank you for having me. It's a pleasure to be here with you tonight. This project, Homes for a Changing Region, is done jointly by the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning, Metropolitan Planning Council, and the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus. I'm with Tesco Associates. They, CMAP, hired us to conduct this study for them. They've done a number of them. We're actually the first time that they did this with a consultant team, and we worked with Valerie Crutchmer Associates, who did the market analysis that was part of the work. We've been working on this for a while. The project got hung up a little bit in a funding problem that the state of Illinois had. You might have read about it, it was in all the papers. CMAP is a state agency, so their funding got tied up in it. So, but, and there was actually a question of whether or not we'd continue. But, the project is alive and moving forward, and we're actually moving towards the completion of the project by the end of the year. So what I'm here tonight to do is to share with you a little bit of the overview of what we've been doing, and share with you some preliminary recommendations, which were in the memo that were part of your agenda packet. Ultimately, the plan that's put together as part of this is for, I'm going to jump around a little bit, is for three communities. CMAP does these in clusters, and you'll see that Hanover Park and West Chicago are also part of this cluster. Communities that are close together have similar kinds of issues or questions to be addressed. A lot of the clusters that CMAP has done, the communities have actually been adjacent to each other. So, this is, this one's a little bit different. But, in terms of the project, CMAP does these as a way of helping communities highlight, in some part, the work they're already doing related to housing. Two, to set a little bit of context for housing. So, the work that advances housing is really a lot of the community development and economic development that you do. It's not just housing. And frankly, as we've gone through and prepared the Glendale Heights portion, you're kind of all over that, and I'm going to highlight some of those things. There have been more than 40 communities that have done these, that have been part of these clusters. The idea is, as I said, to help communities highlight the things that they do that relate to housing, that helped their residents with housing, and to offer some suggestions and ideas potentially moving forward. Over the time that we've been doing this, we had a kickoff meeting, we did a number of stakeholder interviews here at the Village, a lot of them with realtors and other folks that were involved in the real estate market. We prepared a community assessment report, which we were here presenting, and it really has been better than a year ago already, which kind of laid out some of the market realities that housing functions within. And, these initial findings are from that previous report. I'm going to go through them kind of quickly. If there's something that strikes you that you wanted me to pause on, please just let me know. But, in general, one of the things that we look to find are, what are the community assets? And clearly, there's any number of them that are important here in Glendale Heights. The location, the diversity of the community, these are things that make you special. The employment base that's here, these are all the strengths of the community. These are things to build on moving forward, thinking in terms of housing. And the other one. Also, the public services that are available to residents are strengths of the community. What gets to be, what are the issues that relate to housing that became part of the project? Rental units is a challenge for any number of communities. You have a structure in place to deal with them in terms of inspection program. You have an unusual situation in terms of the large number of single-family dwellings that are rentals. This is something that came up as part of the work, something that the Village and the staff are handling, but is interesting because it's reflective of a national trend, this idea of people continuing to rent. This is something that studies show is going to continue on. Other issues are code enforcement, again, ties into the inspection of housing and being on top of this. And then economic development. There's a substantial amount of work being done here related to economic development. The commercial corridors, the commercial centers in the Village are frankly a resource that helps you address housing issues. Opportunities and challenges obviously relate to the same sorts of things in terms of maintaining tax revenue, code enforcement, that sort of things. One of the strengths is an involved leadership and a strong community sense of character, and that comes up later, but I would tell you, I don't remember the last time I was at a Village Board meeting that started with 10 minutes of presentation of community events. It's an astounding piece of community that adds value to the community, that relates to housing and adds value to housing. That's one of the kinds of things that this study seeks to highlight to communities and to your residents and to your businesses. We identified a few issues moving forward. What were the things that we were going to focus on? There you see it, building a sense of community. Is something that a lot of places do, and again, I would jump ahead a little and tell you that the finding is obviously that you do it well. Continuing to be attentive to the code enforcement issues, and you really are engaged in a lot of the best practices. Can you tell already that we were kind of hard-pressed to find things that you're not doing? But we wanted to highlight them as part of this effort, and emphasize that they continue, some of them with a couple of ideas of how to move on with them. Not so much in Glendale Heights, as a couple of the other places in the cluster, but homeowners' associations were among the groups that took a hit during the economic downturn, some of which have not recovered. They have property maintenance responsibilities, just like any other property owner. And we found in doing a lot of the interviews and discussions in the cluster, you and the other two communities, that a lot of them are having trouble keeping up with maintenance. And that becomes an issue for the communities because you need to look to them to keep up with what they're supposed to be doing. And something that we still haven't quite done... And something that we still haven't quite done is finding the new normal. Uh, this whole idea, as I mentioned, that 40% of the single-family homes being rented, uh, the new phrase that you hear from the market now is rent by choice. Um, never forget the first time I heard the term rent by choice. Uh, a lot of folks now are not comfortable buying, right? The American dream was buy the home. Um, studies now are showing that that's not what it used to be. There are people that are uncertain in terms of their income, in terms of their job, they're just scared, they may be underwater with their house. People are more comfortable renting than they've been in the past. So with that as context, the findings and recommendations that were in the memo that you got, uh, I'll, I'll go through those again kinda quickly. If there's something that you see that you'd like me to pause on, uh, you've had a chance to read it, so just, just raise your hand. But again, a lot of this is about highlighting how all these things fit together, how they advance housing goals, how they support you. Ultimately, all of these pieces will be put together for Glendale Heights and for the other two communities, uh, and put together into a single plan report. Uh, and what CMAP asks is that, uh, the communities move forward and adopt them, uh, as, as city, as village policy. So in terms of the, of the recommendations, this notion on building on existing work, again, my theme here tonight is to highlight for you the things that you do well, uh, highlight to you and the community that these things relate to and support housing and housing values, and encourage you to keep moving on a lot of these things and tie them all together. Uh, the one here that, uh, in the property maintenance area that I would just pause on is the idea of, of landlord training. Uh, there's a lot of materials that are required, or there are a lot of materials that are available that you make to landlords, uh, which are terrific, by the way. Um, and there's a requirement that they identify that they have studied these and that they've made, that they've been aware of them. Uh, but creating a landlord or providing resources to landlord is something that, uh, CMAP has found is a useful tool. Uh, this other notion on here about parking issues and working with HOA, something that you've already done. Uh, parking is a challenge in areas, especially townhome areas that don't have enough spare parking and so on. Um, the village's willingness to work with communities to resolve those issues, again, is something that's very significant, uh, and we encourage you to, to continue doing. Economic development, in terms of moving forward, uh, what you know well is the, the opportunities that, that are on North Avenue, uh, and for exploring senior housing are a couple of the key things, uh, senior housing specifically being about housing, uh, that came out of the work done here. Um, so this idea of community building and identifying sense of community and, as I said, the value that that has, quite literally for, for home values. Um, you see our version of the list, um, that you read tonight on, on the left side here. Um, but more importantly, what I found going through your budget is a lot of this is in your budget. A lot of these goals for building community, strengthening community are in your budget. Um, it's something that we would encourage you to continue to do and to continue to be attentive to. And as a planner, and as much as I love comprehensive plans and corridor plans and all that stuff, um, I know well that the budget is an important policy document for a community. It's literally putting its money where its mouth is. Uh, and these are all phrases and concepts that came out of, uh, your budget documents. So, uh, we encourage you to continue looking at your budget as a housing aspect of your work too. Um, this talks more towards the, uh, national consideration, not that there's anything that we can do about this, but it adds context when we deal with code enforcement issues or when we, uh, help HOAs work on housing issues and so on, is understanding where they're coming from. That's why this is part of the program. A, a couple other things to build on and again, a couple of things that, that were in your budget, uh, that jumped out at us as being particular opportunities, is the idea of continually working on the rental license and, and crime prevention programs and the code enforcement program. Um, couple opportunities here, one in terms of the internal program, uh, the code enforcement program is to put together a task force of the folks that, that do that on a daily basis. We found that, uh, those are the folks that really know how it works and where it works. And to the extent you're looking to tweak and refine those, uh, that those folks should be a resource. Similarly, the community is a way to do some outreach when working on the rental license program and continuing to, uh, evolve those programs as was identified in your budget. Some new things that other towns have done, uh, that the village may wanna consider. Uh, one is to create a model lease. There's some language that you do provide for landlords to include, uh, but there are towns, Evanston in particular has, has been a leader in this, that provide model leases. Uh, this just helps ensure that everybody's got the same form, everybody's got the same set of rights, everybody understands their, uh, their, their lease the same way. The, uh, the other one that, that is on here that I really wanted to, to highlight is there, the handyman program is one that has been done in the Northwest burbs. It's a way to help seniors and, um, and folks of lower income stay in their homes. Um, I worked in Mount Prospect for a bunch of years. We had one of these, um, and, and it was great. It really was about helping seniors stay in their homes. Um, and it was nice because when they were done and they came to sign the forms, they brought cookies to staff. So I think that's, that's very important. And then, uh, the other idea about supporting people that could, that are looking to be first-time home buyers, right? There are programs that, um, villages don't have to run, there are resources to do that that, that you can direct people to. And again, you do some of that already. Partnering, uh, is a big part of this approach, uh, and we've mentioned some of these already, uh, but this is something that there's a little more detail on in the report that we'd encourage you to do. Um, couple other new things along those lines. Um, some communities have housing commissions. To the extent that housing issues, uh, come up, to the extent that you as a board of trustees are looking for, uh, a policy group to think through any of these issues, if that's on your list, um, a housing commission is a, is a good way to deal with that. Um, the other suggestion which relates to communication, uh, is about working with other government agencies. I know there's already regular meetings that go on, um, and we, we certainly encourage that. Uh, there are countywide organizations and resources that, um, third point up there are some of the resources that I mentioned previously. Uh, to the extent block grant monies are a possibility, uh, the county does that. So that is my whirlwind tour through, through that recommendations memo. Um, and again, what we would ask for you is two things. One, uh, is for your ultimate direction, uh, to tell us that, yep, we're on the right track, keep going, put together that report. The other question is, one of the elements of the plan, uh, that CMAP is looking for us to do, is to incorporate a visualization. They have done these in all the previous reports. Uh, and it's, it's a graphic that shows either, um, you see here on the left, there's a two-dimensional plan of a potential redevelopment of a site. Um, on the, uh, on the other graphic, I know it's kinda hard to see from here, but now I've done it. Which one's the laser? Is there one? Ah. Um, if you see here, this is the site as it exists today and down here, there's a picture that shows what it might look like if there was a, a development attached to it. Um, I'll tell you honestly, in working with Joanne, all of, Joanne, all of us looking at the, uh, this, uh, the study and the recommendations, the idea was to have one of the recommendations be conveyed through one of these, uh, visualizations. We didn't come up with one yet. So if there are ideas that you have or things that you think that we, we can do, um, we'll, uh, we'll follow up with you, uh, Joanne, and, and see if there's anything. But that's, um, that's what I have for you. I appreciate your indulgence. If there's any questions or comments, I'd be more than happy to answer.
Any questions? Pat?
Yes, you said that, uh, most people are, are renting. Uh, the real estate people that I speak to, they're telling me that their own house is within the village in six, seven days.
Yeah. Um, not most, not most people are, are renting. There's a large percentage of rental units in the village that are single-family homes, but it's not, it's not most. Uh, but there is more of it than there was. Not that the housing market isn't strong, but the rental market is just as strong.
Okay, and, and a while back, we were rated, I believe, number one in people that wanna move to our village. So I mean, that's, that's a good sign. I forgot what magazine that was in. That was in, uh...
Wall Street Journal.
Wall Street Journal. So, that means we must be doing something right.
Well, and again, I don't always get to come and stand in front of a village board and tell you how good you're doing, so it's fun for me being here tonight. Um, a lot of times I'm the bearer of bad news and people throw stuff at me, but no, nobody's ever thrown anything at me. Um, so yeah, and that's, that's why we wanted to highlight that these are things that are being done well. We wanted to highlight to you and to the community, uh, that these things really do support their home values, that a lot of these events that go on, your attention to housing and your budget activities, these are things that make the community attractive. These are things that add to property values. That's, that's gonna be part of the value of the plan as we see it for Glendale Heights is, is shining a light on that fact.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Just, thank you very much. Very informative.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
Awesome. Is that all we needed then for it to?
Mm-hmm. I think so.
Don't need anything. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Okay, on to our next item. Uh, Kalia. Chester.
Oh, I just wanted to thank, uh, Doug, Chief Doug Flint and his entire, entire staff for doing a magnificent job to get recertification. Recertified, I mean.
Thank you very much, very much appreciated.
Extend that to everybody, especially Ms. Pentecost too, 'cause she did a lot of work.
Katie did fantastic.